I plan to leave and to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everybody for coming tonight. We'll start our meeting with an adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A second. Motion second, all those in favor? Can I get a motion for consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion second, all those in favor? All right, first thing on our agenda for tonight is the employee of the month. We have Mr. Bates with us tonight. So, I would like to welcome Mr. Bates to the meeting and let you know that you have been nominated by your peers and/or members of the public for your exemplary work. The students love you because you're full of energy and you've earned their respect. You make sure that your students get the best education that they can. You also create an atmosphere of trust which brings out the students' curiosities to learn. Parents are given constructive feedback for their students' work and hard work and apply themselves that actually work. You are great in influence and you are a great role model for our students. So, thank you for your time and all the effort that you put into your job.
A pile bag or a cup?
No, not at all, not at all. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
And then you get to stand in front of our board here.
Do I have this in a particular way?
Nope.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, we have another one for Mr. Lamb. He is the custodian at the high school. He's not here tonight, but I would like to recognize him. And he was nominated by his peers and members of the public for his exemplary work. His nomination said, "James goes out of his way to help students find missing items. Most recently, he went out into the dumpster to find a box that was discarded. A student needed information on the box to connect to a medical app on their phone. He is always willing to help anyone, no matter what it takes to get the job done." So, James Lamb, thank you for your time.
He's not, yeah, he'd take whatever. He's not here, but I do want to say this. We've got a running tally going of how many times we make the announcement, James did walk us.
Oh, perfect. Wonderful. Well, thank you and pass along our thanks to him as well. All right, next, Board of Ad Acknowledgements. Jeff, you want to start? You're just standing. You look ready.
So, we've been a busy bunch at the high school with traveling. So, I just want to read a quote. I stole this, I hope she doesn't mind, from Laura F.'s Facebook account I saw earlier today. "There are the moments that are building our future leaders in our communities." And so, she specifically was talking about the trip that her FBLA took out to Phoenix for the national conference. And not only did they get to participate in leadership and learn more about the business organization, they also got to tour college camps when they're out there. And so, anytime you get to take students out of our community and open their eyes up to other possibilities that are out there, I think is a tremendous opportunity. Our FFA was also busy traveling in the last month. They were in Indianapolis and had a successful trip. We're glad to have them back. They came rushing back into town on Halloween night so they could do a little treating with their families. I know. We've been busy with some testing, the pre-ACT, the work keys, and the pre-SAT have all taken place in the last month. Results are coming back and we're sending those out. So, if you have a freshman anywhere in your community of people, they should have got a letter in the mail that had an explanation of how they did. And it's not a be-all, end-all predictor for how they're going to do later on in the ACT, but it's a pretty good guess. And so, some kids are really excited about where they're at and others can identify things that they need to work on. And let's see, we're giving the ASVAB on Wednesday, staying in the testing vein. That is a military aptitude test. So, we've got quite a few students signed up for that. And lastly, we have a blood drive that will be taking place at the high school on Thursday, the 13th.
Perfect. Thank you.
Activity lineup at the high school, we had over a dozen kids qualify for state art band and band. And we had almost nine or 10 choir members also qualified for that. So, that was awesome.
I want to jump in, Matt. We compete in the district you're assigned to geographically. So, we're with all the six A schools up north. So, to say we're in the most difficult one would be an understatement. It's really impressive with the vein of choir.
Wasn't there like, I thought I saw like four people last year that qualified for that, but it went up to eight or 10 or something like that? That's awesome.
Sport-wise, we wrapped up right at the door with all of our fall sports. Highlights, obviously, was going to Hutch in state volleyball and it was awesome. I certainly didn't plan on being there on Saturday just because of the competition that's out there. And so, that was a surprise. I didn't have clothes. So, I just, I made my mom's outfit and got to see her. So, that was cool. Probably the coolest thing, or two really cool things that came out of that. One, besides just our kids playing above themselves in the competition that they face, was during, oh, the awards assembly, or not assembly, the awards at the end. Andale, of course, Andale about playing off some touch. So, state volleyball for Andale. And we're three hours, so we had about as many people in this room. We cheered for Andale except when they played us. Andale cheered for us. The really cool thing was, our first game of the Friday, Andale student body started to arrive. Well, they wanted to sit where we were sitting because they were playing Rock or Meage the next game. And so, their boys started filtering down into our empty seats. So, then they started cheering for us. They did a good job. Of course, they didn't know that the Pala cheered, but they jumped right in. So, that kind of started a little camaraderie there. It ended with, when we received our fourth plate medal, the entire Andale crowd just erupted like a whole game. And it was really awesome. And you got your board reports, right? The email that we got from just a random parent at Andale. So, just to say that our girl went out there and exceeded expectations is beyond what I feel like we expected out there. So, kudos to them, kudos to the coach, and yeah, it looked bright.
And the tennis girls too had a similar...
Yeah, they had a, they had a really good season. They also had just a random email from Ottawa of all people. It said, "We cheer you for us."
Anybody jump to it?
Yeah, I'll go next. So, just want to highlight tomorrow is Veterans Day. And so, we will host our annual Veterans Day assembly tomorrow. That'll be at 2:30. We started last week up at the Power Power, got just some opportunity on Halloween stays to provide extra homework help. And so, we had about 15 kids in there last week, which was awesome. And so, hopefully we can garner some more kids in there. We had a bunch of teachers that stayed to help them. And then, I mean, I know you're really excited about this. And so, I hope that my phone's ringing off the hook tomorrow, but we're looking for chaperones for our dance on Friday. A is hosting our first dance, so I know that the kids get really excited about that. So, I just wanted to share this.
I would jump on that, but I'm out of town.
Right? So, but that's what we've got going on. So, thanks for good.
All right, Saturday, Sunday was the Girls on the Run 5K, so they finished up. First time it was ever on a Sunday. Of course, it was very, very cold if you paid attention to the weather. But our girls did great. This year, it was down by Hy-Vee Arena. So, once you got down in the buildings, kind of blocked the wind, so it really wasn't too bad. But they did fantastic. Panther Clubs, we, one of our groups is letters to elders. And they are partnered with someone in the community and the kids are writing back and forth. And those letters were delivered over the weekend. And a couple of the teachers sent some pictures and touches your heart. I mean, you can tell that they really enjoyed getting the letters. And then, my middle school, we have a Veterans Day program tomorrow. Ours is in the morning. So, if you're not doing anything, feel free to stop in.
I've got a couple of things coming up. Next week is Cottonwood Academic Night for our students and parents, where we'll come in and teach parents some strategies that they can use to help support their students' reading and math skills at home and come share this fellowship, have some practical ideas and activities they can take home with them to work with their kids. And then, this Thursday, from four to seven, we're doing teachers, MICK Teachers Night at McDonald's. We'll fundraise there for schools. We want to have some Cottonwood staff run the drive-through or whatever they have us doing from four to seven this Thursday night. And then, we also launched Lego League last week, or two weeks ago. We have about 23 students participating in Lego League. So, we have, that group meets after school on Thursdays for an hour. And kudos to Mary Ger and Kristy Eager and a lot of some high school students that come down and help with it. Community members, it's a great program there. So, some good things going on at Cottonwood.
Thank you. Anybody have anything from the board? Okay, all right, we'll move right along. We have information and discussion items. So, the first thing up is the USD 368 rep for a representative for the Pala rec.
Yeah, this is just a reminder that any community member that's interested in representing the board for, on the Pala rec mission, those applications are out there on the website. They've been emailed to all of our parents as well, also on the Pala rec website. They're due to Laura Lee on December the first. So, then, at the December meeting, you all can get an interview on them to select who that is.
Any questions on that? Just as a reminder, on the 18th, Tuesday, the 18th, at 8 o'clock, we will be meeting, for a special meeting at the high school. This will wrap up our fall side of the meetings before we start in the winter, January, February, whenever, over our next round of meetings. So, if you can make it, that would be fantastic. Next, just as a reminder to the board, we have superintendent evaluations. They will be due on the first. They are in the executive session of the agenda on board docs, but then Laura Lee is going to send those out tomorrow morning. So, be on the lookout for that if you can't find it and make sure that those are in so that she can put those together for us and have them ready for the December meeting. Next, on information, Matt's got information about the elementary behavior needs.
Yeah, so, in some of my reports and so forth, you've heard me say that we're dealing with some increased number of behaviors, especially at Cottonwood this year. But what we've noticed in the last couple of years is some increased behaviors as kids come in. I think some of this is just, it's, I mean, things that maybe we've taken for granted. Kids knowing how to play with one another, how to share, how to communicate, how to, you know, if they're frustrated, you know, dealing with some of that. So, we've had an increased number at Cottonwood and, you know, even I've been up there a couple of times and been able to help with those. But I wanted to bring it up for the board tonight. And Mr. Riffle can talk too about some of the things that as we brainstorm and trying to figure out, every kid in every situation is a little bit different. And what works today may not work tomorrow. What worked, you know, five minutes ago may be a little bit different. So, we have a lot of really good staff working, working together to try to do it. But we met, I met with the building leadership team and then the building leadership team has continued to meet a couple of times on trying to come up with some, an outline, I guess, of some things. So, I've asked Mr. Riffle if he would just kind of give you a little bit of an update on what that looks like.
Yeah, sure. Well, Mr. Riffle said, we have had, I would say, an increase in frequency and in intensity of some behaviors, particularly in our kindergarten and first grade, and like we talked about it. I think it is just in every situation, different, every student is unique. But overall, probably is some lack of social skills there, I would say. Just a lack of knowing how to deal with emotions and frustrations. And when things don't go the way you want them to go, how do you deal with that? And so, we see, have seen an increase in some intensity in some behaviors there. We are working with the Urban Learning, Elizabeth Layton Center and to provide support. And just like they have in the past, but they continue to do that. We're also working with a consultant, Chris Perry at Cultivate Education, to come up with some behavior supports and plans for that. And then, our teachers like Matt had indicated, working on what they're calling a behavior matrix, which kind of provides a framework of how we identify and respond to behaviors across grade levels to provide that, kind of that support. We do have good teachers and then we've got a good school. What we've got is some individual students that have just some intense behaviors. And this is a year where sometimes that ebbs and flows. Some years you'll have more, some years you'll have less. This is a year we have more. So, I'd like to think of it as, not necessarily an off year, but just a year where there's particularly an increase of that. Hopefully, that will settle down in the future. But we want to be prepared for that in a house and things in place. After Brian, I'm just going to make a little bit of work with a student who was in pretty intense for about 30 minutes. And Mr. Mick came in there about five minutes, got him calmed down. I told him I'd never done some of that before. I worked really hard to get that student back on track. And it just took a little different person, I guess, that day. But he was helpful. And so, we've had some help there. And Ivy Potter's been a great help. And Aaron Hammer, a school social worker, has helped us too. Those resources combined with some of the other resources we're trying to utilize in that department to help to get a handle on some of the behavior and handle and manage that a little better. Any questions or anything?
Obviously, it would probably be helpful if you had more support.
You know, I wouldn't turn down help. Yeah, yeah. More, there are days where it's, yeah, we're running out of people sometimes a little bit. We have to be creative. But yeah, it's jobs some days. And then, some days it's smooth sailing too. So, it just depends on the day.
I think it would be beneficial to add in the possibility of hiring somebody to help out. So, whatever you guys need, we're willing to do so.
We have, we have been able to add a pair of positions to help, I mean, really immediately. So, we have to look at it and try to figure out the, some of the, and we've been able to lean on, Lake Mary has been able to help us with their, and I, we could, I refer to them as a BCBA, which that's the acronym. It's behavioral health, their behavioral. And then, also some, a registered behavior technician or whatever that helps. So, we've been able to lean on our Elizabeth Layton agreement and having that has helped too. But yeah, and that's something that we're, as part of this, trying to figure out is, because we want to make sure that what we do, we want to try to be targeted and do the right thing. Very much so.
Well, thanks to your BLT team for spending extra time to work, try and make a plan.
Sure.
You can only start from where you start. So, so thanks to them. One of the things I think that has kind of hit me in this last probably week, week and a half, I don't know if you've watched it, but it's been all over Court TV. There's been a trial and it just, as I watched it, listening to the teachers be interviewed and having sat in those situations and had students like that, it really just kind of impressed upon me. And it made me think, like, how grateful I was to have a building admin, who whenever I came to her at the time of a distressed kid, she always reacted as if it was a big deal. She always took it seriously, whether that was a real threat or not. She always sided with me as the teacher and looked into every situation. So, I want to encourage you as admins to do that, to take every teacher's concern seriously from top to bottom. I would rather be precautionary and look into every single thing than be reactionary and have it be a newsworthy, you know, problem. So, not saying that we don't as building admins, you know, you guys have the frontline tough jobs. And it's one that I would never, would never do, to be honest with you. I just wouldn't. It takes a special heart to be a teacher. It takes an even different heart to be an admin. So, I commend you for coming to the hard days every day. So, thank you. And when you show up, your staff shows up ready to serve. We all work together to serve at all of our students, no matter what. And we, I mean, we have to love them on the hard days. And those are the hard days. But I want to encourage you to continue to love them through the hard days, but to serve your staff so that they can serve the students. So, my two cents.
And the staff has done a great job.
Oh, I don't know.
Supporting each other and supporting the, caring for each other.
It's what helps you come back the next day when you know you're not in the boat alone.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah. You can, you've got a team to lean on.
Yeah. And I'll say, you'll see, the district, the battery, the community has been versed.
Good. Awesome. Well, thank you for that. We appreciate the update. All right, moving along. We don't have any open forums for tonight, so we'll move along to action items. We only have one, the considering of approval of the J, of the JAG-K program for the high school for the 26, 27 school year.
So, JAG-K, as it's referred to, also known as Jobs for America's Graduates. The K stands for Kansas. Is an at-risk program that really helps kids get on to determine what they want to do post-secondary. We do, we do a lot of, we do a lot of this stuff with our, with our rural world study. We renamed that position to better reflect it. But that was Jenny Walterman last year and then Haley this year, doing a fantastic job. Getting kids out to see different careers, applying for colleges, trade schools, unions and so forth. So, but this class is, is one that is sponsored by a multitude of businesses and state-level entities, government entities and so forth for a program. So, it can, it can be anywhere from, it can be all four years. So, a kid could take it, freshman through senior year. So a kid could take it freshman through senior year, or they could take it, you know, junior or senior year. Um, and it is a, a class. It deals with the soft skills, it gets them out and so forth. The instructor for this, um, is actually hired through and is a, um, is an employee of the JAG-K program. And so what, for us to, to enter into a partnership is we're basically agreeing, um, that we will provide, um, someone, a classroom, um, to work with, um, this, this teacher, if you will. A classroom that will help get, um, kids in the program roughly, it, we would look at sixty, sixty kids. It's four, actually four sections, so that the way the program is, is they teach four classes and then that person has four, four classes off or four periods off because they should be out in the community, um, making those connections, job shadowing, um, that piece. It is a year-round, um, job where that person in the summer is having training and then also doing, doing some of that. Um, the, because of the sponsorships and so forth, um, the cost to the district is roughly fifteen percent of the total overall cost, which is projected to be for us, um, just shy of sixteen thousand dollars. So fifteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight, um, would be our, our cost. The rest of it is, is from the sponsors. Um, this, this program's been around quite a while, um, and there's, there's some, um, quite a few high schools in Kansas that have it, although it's starting to gain a little bit of more momentum. Um, it, it's time for us to, um, and based on the needs of our community, I think is, is, um, would be, um, well-received, um, for that. I know, um, Samantha has had some experience in its, you know, formation from the legislative standpoint as well. But I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Hines, um, has been in the, in the meetings, um, as well from the start, um, for the program. And so we both can answer questions. You have the memorandum of understanding that was provided as part of, of Board Docs. But, um, a very good program that I, I think could, um, could benefit our, our students greatly.
So classes are housed in the high school?
Yes.
Do, does the, does the person who's running the class, do they report to Jeff or do they report to Jenny, the JAG?
Well, I mean, they would be considered part of the staff, but, I mean, their, their immediate supervisor, um, or who, you know, the true, um, HR or part would be the JAG-K. But I would say it's, it's similar to, would be similar to like our employees that are, co-op employees that are in a different district. I mean, they're working with that, that principal and that administration. So their, their day-to-day stuff is, is in-house. But if there's something that's, you know, beyond the, you know, the day-to-day of, hey, this is the schedule and so forth, they would, they would go through that.
So does our cost include that person's salary too?
Our cost, our cost is, all the other costs, salary, benefits, training, everything is, um, is outside. I, is, is part of, it's on JAG-K. I, I did, I didn't misspeak, I did not, because of some trainings that would happen, um, we would be, and so we, it would cost us fifteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And if they're some, they're gone for, you know, being sick or for a training, then we're picking up the, the sub-classes, which would be, you know, maybe.
Right.
And also I want to add, a lot of the sponsors have vested interests in it. It's like Honeywell and other ones who are actually wanting to, they're working towards having future employees as well. So it's building a good future for our students, um, that they wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity to do. There's also community colleges that, uh, sponsor as well, uh, and Walmart's a sponsor. So it's really just a large group of people who are trying to make the best for the future of our students.
We would have, what we're looking at at least initially is probably three classes at the high school and we would have one class at the alternative school. Thought of for that to be an opportunity for them as well.
Sure.
Ms. Ryan, is there anything you would add or?
No, I, it's a tremendous value. I don't know what else we could provide our students similarly for a cost like that. I was amazed when they explained how, how that was structured.
Yeah.
I toured Turner, who has two, um, JAG specialists as their hall, and had a very nice hour-long conversation with the principal up there, Mark Barrow. And we toured you to work as well, just to see how others are implementing it. Um, if this were to pass, um, tonight, then we would invest some more time in going out and building relationships with other schools that have programs. So we would have enough people to ask questions of.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions about the JAG-K program?
How about a motion to approve it?
A second. Motion a second. All those in favor? Five votes, awesome. Okay. All right. We are at our point, at the point in the meeting where we are ready for executive session.
We had one thing, I missed one thing.
Nope, you're good.
We missed one thing in our acknowledgement and a thing pretty important. We go back to talking to our cross-country team real quick. They got second in their regional. If you saw any pictures at all, what they ran through down there, it, it, I, I don't even know how to explain. Need, needy inches of water and everything. They ended up getting second and Ellen Neatum got second at stake. So kudos to our cross-country team for, for that. I just wanted to shout out real quick before, um, community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, I move that we go into executive session with Matt to discuss personnel pursuant to personnel matters of non-located personnel in order to protect the privacy and interest of the individual to be discussed and then we return to open session in this room at twenty, twenty?
It's correct. You guys will discuss, but, um, it depends. Twenty minutes, one, twenty, thirty?
Okay, say seven o'clock?
At seven o'clock.
Okay. All right. Need a motion?
You have a motion second.
Second. I have a motion. All of us in favor. All right.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn?
To adjourn. Motion second, all those in favor?
Christian second.
Five.
Yep. I think Samantha's second.
Yeah, I'll...
Oh, Samantha.
Yeah. Either one of us would have... Anybody.
Yeah. Just anybody to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you.